Okay.
All right, we'll have folks coming on here, so give them just a second.
Thank you.
People come into the room, it takes maybe fifteen seconds to get everybody into the room.
That's right, now I know, Michelle, there's a waiting room and then we let folks in.
Yep, so they're coming in as we speak, Commissioner, I'll let you know kind of when it slows down and it looks like we got everybody in there.
Thank you, Michelle.
Just wait a few more seconds, see if we get people, more people coming in.
I was on a panel last night, there were seventy-five participants, that was fun.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're probably, we have most of the people that were ready to go, ready, so let's go ahead and start, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle, good afternoon, folks, welcome, I'm John Cofalos, Lammer County Commissioner, District One. This is our monthly Red Feather Lakes Community Conversation, where obviously we're holding it virtually. The game plan for today is that we have, I think we have, well, we have four, in addition to myself and Michelle as the host, who will provide instructions in a moment, we have four folks, Angela Myers, our clerk and recorder, will give us a brief update on the on the elections, I think that's of interest to folks, and then we have Lori Hodges with our our Office of Emergency Management, our director, and she'll provide an update on what's happening with the Cameron Peak Fire and evacuations and all of that kind of thing. And then we have Daniel Baucher and Rob Addington, Daniel is with the Putter River, I get the the order mixed up, but it's the Putter River Water Coalition, Watershed Coalition, and I think, Rob, you're with the Nature Conservancy, is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, and they're going to give us an update on the the report, the analysis that the state did, you know, regarding the Elk Ridge Fire, the prescribed burn from last year, and lessons learned from that, and anything else that may come up, so after each person presents, there'll be an opportunity to ask questions of Angela Myers, of Lori Hodges, and of our two other guests, and then in whatever time is remaining, we go till one-thirty, I'm happy to respond to questions. Before I turn it over to Michelle, one very quick thing I want to let folks know, an update, is that those of you who are interested in the issues related to the unsafe recreational sports shooting, you may be aware that we were scheduled to do a safety site visit in the US Forest Service lands, you know, just to the west of Crystal Lakes, and that was scheduled for next Thursday, October one. Because of the uncertainties related to the Cameron Peak Fire, we have yet, we have, we've had to reschedule that yet a second time. And at this point, we are looking at November fifth, November fifth, from twelve to four PM, and there's at least one person from a community of interest in the Crystal Lakes area that will be part of the stakeholder group participating in that, in that site safety visit, thank you, Michelle, you're on.
Thank you, Commissioner, good afternoon, everybody, my name is Michelle Byrd, I'm the Public Affairs Director for Lammer County, and today I act as your Zoom hostess, that really kind of means I'm somewhere between a facilitator of the meeting and an IT support. Um, so I don't necessarily have any expertise for today, but I'll help moderate the meeting. Um, you may notice, if you have not been with us before, we're using a type of Zoom that you might not be familiar with, it's called Zoom Webinar. Um, and it's a little bit different than Zoom meetings, which is probably what you are used to, and we use this in public meetings, primarily based on safety, um, one, you'll see that there is no chat box for you guys as participants to chat out to the rest of the participants. Um, this is because we're concerned about folks coming in and sharing a link that might put some ransomware or send you to a bad website. And since we want everyone to be involved, we don't necessarily want to vet who comes into these meetings, and so we kind of shut down that process. Um, and the second thing you'll notice is that we can't see you, but you can see us. Again, that's because we want everyone to be involved, but we do worry a little bit about what people put on their screens, as you can imagine, you've all heard about Zoom bombings before, so that is why we use Zoom Webinar, and that doesn't mean that you can't participate, though. Um, there's a couple different ways that you guys can participate in our meeting today, and we hope you do. Um, first and foremost, there's a raise hand function, you should be able to see it there at the bottom of your screen. You want to talk to us, and all you need to do is raise your hand, that'll let me know that you want to speak, and then I'll kind of walk you through the steps so that you can join us and speak to us. The second way, and this is sometimes for most people, the easiest way is to use that Q and A function, a lot like chat, you go in there and you put in your questions, and it'll come to me, and I'll make sure it doesn't have some weird link in it, and I can then send it out. Um, and so go ahead and use that Q and A function. Also, I know a lot of people sometimes like to just make comments, they don't necessarily have questions, and they tend to do that with the chat function. Feel free to use the Q and A for that as well, I'll just double check it doesn't have a bad link, and then I'll make sure you that your comments go public. We're not here to to syphil anyone's voices, and we want to make sure that you're heard and your comments are heard. So please use that Q and A section like that. Um, if you're calling in, I don't see anyone calling in at the moment, but just in case I miss someone, the way to raise your hand, you want to do that by hitting star nine, you hit star nine, so that's if you're calling in, not using Zoom on your phone, that's different. If you actually called in on the phone number, you raise your hand by hitting star nine, that'll let me know you want to talk, and then I'll walk you through those steps. So with that, I might use, there is a way for me to chat to you guys and send you links, so as our presenters maybe talk about different links or times or phone numbers, different things you might want to know, I'll be sending those out via the chat. So with that, Commissioner Cofalos, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you kindly, Michelle, and before I turn it over to our Lammer County Clerk and Recorder, just to let you know that if there are questions that are raised that we can't adequately answer, our commitment is that we'll follow up and get a proper answer for you. Thank you all for participating, I know these are really unsettling times, especially for folks up at you know, up in the mountains, Red Feather Lakes, Crystal Lakes, Glacier View Meadows, and certainly on the south end of the fire. So thank you, and I'd like to turn it over to Angela, and also thank you, Angela, for taking the time to to inform us about the elections.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I echo your sentiments for the challenges that the folks up in Red Feather Lakes are having, I, you know, our hearts go out to them. Please know that, you know, I know the election is not the first thing on your mind, and it's not, you know, you've got a lot of other things more important than this right at the moment. Please know, if you need assistance with your voting, because you've been displaced in some way, call my office, the number is nine-seven-oh-four-nine-eight-seven-eight-two-zero. And don't hesitate to contact us, also, you can go to votelammer.org for your information on how to get us anytime, and we will help you get your vote in, so please know, it's our highest priority, but we know you have other priorities, so let us help you in that regard if you need it. We have an election coming up, it is, you know, we don't have necessarily an election day in Colorado. We we receive our ballots well in advance, so ballots will be received, start coming in the mail the week of October the twelfth. Um, and so, you know, you, I want to encourage everyone, as you get your ballot, please vote it and get it right back to us as quickly as you can. It's going to be a very busy election for us, and the earlier we can get ballots in, the earlier we're going to have election results, so it's really important for you. As well, a lot of noise, as Commissioner referred to, a lot of noise out there in the world about election processes. Please know, we have been doing mail ballots in Colorado and in Lammer County since 2013, we've got this, okay? We know how to do this, we don't have any questionable processes, our, we've been very successful at it. I I'm certainly not, when I say that, I'm certainly not advocating that for the entire nation, I would not begin to say a one-size-fits-all. But here in Colorado, a lot of the mail balloting noise that you hear doesn't apply because we've been doing it a long time. So if you have concerns associated with that, call me, ask me directly, I'm the horse's mouth, okay? And for your cohorts and your your other citizens across the across the nation who might be talking about this, have them go to their election official where they live and get the right answers. Social media is not the right place for your information, so please don't use your social media for that information, use it to tell about your, you know, your vacation, your kids' accolades and all those wonderful things, but don't use it to get your information about how elections work, especially here in Lammer County. I am your source for that, and I work for you, so don't delay in calling me directly. Now, I only have just a few minutes, because I know you've got a lot of other very important people, and honestly, guys, you know, we're so admiring of the work that you folks are doing with respect to the fire, and I don't want to take away from that time, so if there are questions for me specifically, I want to answer them. And I'm hoping, Michelle, you'll butt in and tell me if there are some, because I really want it to be pertinent to the folks on the phone. Waiting for that to happen, though, I'm going to keep talking just for a couple of minutes. When you do get your ballot, there will be a stub on the top, it's a beautiful orange stub, it says, you, I voted in the in the 2020 general election, it is your keepsake, okay? Please let it be your replacement for your need for that I voted sticker, which requires in-person contact to get. And I'm hoping you will use that instead, that I voted sticker is going to ruin your clothes in the dryer anyway, so don't waste your time with that. Use your, use your orange stub and pin it on if you feel like you need to, it's going to get a lot more attention that way anyway. But please do remove it before you return your ballot. Never, ever, ever, ever give your ballot to anyone else before you vote it, not, and not before you vote it, not before you seal it in your envelope, not before you sign the exterior envelope, and certainly not after you have completed your voting. Lot of noise out there about people collecting ballots, I'm not even going to begin to say they're not good people, but I would say to you that your importance of your ballot is different than anyone who collects your ballot, and the person who collects your ballot also has their life happening. Don't put your ballot in a situation where it could be relegated to whatever that person's life is happening, I'll give you some examples. What happens to the importance of your ballot if the person you gave it to gets in a car accident? What if they found out that someone in their family is very ill? Or maybe they're just not as organized as you, and it falls between the seats, it's just not a good idea, we've got so many great ways for you to return your ballot. We this year have eighteen at this point, and I think I'm going to be adding a few more before we get to, before you get ballots out there, of twenty-four hour drop boxes, they're they're listed in your instructions that come with your ballot. So look at these instructions, they've got all the information you need. If you don't have your instructions handy, go to votelammer.org, all those locations are there as well, there is no reason for you not to drop your ballot yourself in a ballot drop box, including you folks in Red Feather Lakes. You've got a box right there outside the library, very convenient for you, please use it. If someone offers to pick up your ballot, ask them instead for a ride to the box, and make sure your ballot gets there the way it should. Michelle, do I have any questions waiting on me?
Well, you did have a question about can mountain folks deposit their ballots reliably reliably at the Red Feather Lakes ballot box, but you answered it.
Yes, please do, those boxes are under twenty-four hour surveillance, and so that is definitely a secure situation for you. We begin chain of custody the minute we pick those ballots out of that box, it's never done by a a single individual, we always have bipartisan teams doing that, so you know, we put a tremendous amount of security on your ballot. The security risk for a mail-in ballot is tremendously higher when it's in the hands of the voter. So be, treat your ballot with that kind of care that it deserves, to make sure you don't put a security risk. One last thing I'm going to say, because I know you want to get on to other folks, Commissioner, you know, don't show your voted ballot to anybody else, don't take a selfie of your voted ballot, that's a way bad plan, because the sanctity of your secrecy with your ballot should be important to you. You know, there's a lot of noise out there, a lot of people who diss other people for their opinions, don't let that, don't let you be dissed, or you're putting yours out there, meaning that someone else has put on the line, hey, so-and-so showed me theirs, you ought to show me yours, right? Don't start that, it's a bad plan for the sanctity of our voting in this, certainly in Lammer County and across the nation, I would argue.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, are there any concerns about being able to empty the ballot boxes in light of the fire? The Cameron Peak Fire?
That's a really great question, um, and I think that we would take that as it comes, I'm certainly, I'm certain that these folks on the on the call with us today can attest to the planning that happens as realities unfold. But certainly that ballot box would be a high priority for us, and certainly if we needed some kind of escort to get there, we would, I know, have that kind of support to do that. And we wouldn't, we would be watching that reality as it unfolds to make sure that hopefully we wouldn't get in a a situation where we wouldn't be capable of getting to that box. There will be boxes down, down the mountain, too, where you can drop your ballot, certainly in La Porte, there's one there at the grocery store in Overland Foods in La Porte, we're working on one at Ted's Place, it's not, I'm not, that's not common knowledge yet, but that's one we're working on as well. So you will have some other options. Thank you, thank you, go to votelammer.org, call me for your information if you need it, thank you. Vote early.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I don't have any other questions for Angela, so I'm going to send it back to you.
Thanks, again, thanks. Thank you, Angela, and have a wonderful day, we'll turn it over to Lori Hodges, and Lori, welcome. I'm sure you have some really important and relevant things that you could share with us regarding the your work and your collaboration with the firefighters and all the other stakeholders involved in this Cameron Peak Fire. Thanks for taking the time, Lori.
No problem, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, I don't, I don't know what the questions are going to be from folks, but I have some ideas, because they're the questions that we get probably the most in the Joint Information Center or on on my own phone, so I'll just start really with a quick overview of the fire, I did see that Reagan's on from the Forest Service, so if there's specific questions with regard to the fire itself, what it's doing, or where it's going, that's really a Forest Service question, so Reagan is the Public Information Officer for that, so I don't know if she knew I saw her, and then also I saw Warren Jones was on as a fire chief for Glacier View, so if there's some questions, he also might be able to help with that as well. So from the briefing this morning, the fire, as you guys know, is a hundred and four thousand seven hundred ninety-one acres, they did increase containment by an additional ten percent, so it's twenty-seven percent contained right now. The next two days are going to be some tricky days on the fire, there are going to be some winds that are occurring today, and then especially tomorrow, there's a red flag warning for that area because of the strong winds that are expected and the low relative humidity. So with that in mind, they're really putting a ton of resources on the fire right now, especially that north side, the thumb is what they've been calling it, and they have a lot of air resources, they have a lot of ground resources in that area to really try to keep that fire from moving any further east or north into the Red Feather, Crystal Lakes, or Glacier View areas. Because the conditions are so dry, though, and it is hot weather, and it is going to be windy, there is obviously a concern about that fire, about the fire in that specific area, because the winds are going to be moving the fire kind of to the northeast, so that's kind of where the fire is for right now, as far as additional specifics about tactics or anything like that, I'm I'm not your guy for that. But again, Reagan's not, if she wanted to add anything with regard to the fire, I don't know if you wanted to add anything now, or if you just want to answer questions if needed, is Reagan around?
So Lori, I have to promote Reagan, so I'm going to do that really quickly. Hold on, Reagan.
I'll just keep going.
Here, I promoted her to a panelist, so now she should be able to chat with us as needed.
Okay, I don't know Reagan if you wanted to say anything, but I just wanted to give you that opportunity.
Hi, no, I just, I I knew that there would be some interest, and so I thought I would hop on in case there were any questions or anything today, just, or to hear community feedback, so if people have questions, I'm happy to to try to help, but really was just here to to listen and make sure, if there was a need, I was here.
Okay, super, thank you. So as far as, I know that there are going to be questions about access, there are questions about evacuation, that's kind of what we get the most questions about. One thing I would tell everybody is if you haven't already gotten credentials, they are still doing credentialing at the Fort Collins Town Hall. Our Fort Collins partners are helping us with that, so please, if you don't currently have credentials, I would really highly recommend that you go and get those credentials. We did just extend the credentialing into the weekend, and we're probably going to be doing Glacier View as well in the weekend, we're trying to do the planning for that right now, so just so you know, that that is coming up, and we'll get some public messaging out about that once it's set. But try to get those credentials as soon as you can. As far as access in mandatory evacuation areas, again, today and tomorrow are going to be high-fire danger days, so it's not likely that they're going to be allowing people in unless it's really an emergent situation, like we did have a gentleman who, he needed his insulin, you know, in the Red Feather Lakes area. Obviously, that's a medical thing that we want to make sure he has good medicine, so he could be escorted in. Um, and then also, if we have, you know, animals are still there, we do have large animal and small animal evac teams that can go in and grab those animals for you. They're trained in those fire areas, so just reach out to us if those are needs for you, but otherwise, in the next couple days, I don't imagine a lot of access will be in that area, especially on that northeast side of the fire. As far as the as far as the evacuation for Glacier View, it's currently voluntary, there is a trigger point, and I think the team was talking about that last night, I saw a lot of chatter from the public about that. So, um, you know, if if the fire reaches a specific point, that that is what will trigger a mandatory evacuation for Glacier View. So if you guys haven't already done so, I would just really recommend that you sign up for the text alerts through NOCO Alert if you have a cell phone, that's just, if you go to your text and you text the word L C E V A C, so L C evac to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, then you will start getting updates about evacuations, any changes in your area. If you don't have that, the NOCO Alerts website is also available, and the JIC phone number, you can call them to get updates as well. If there is a mandatory evacuation and you have a landline, it will go to that landline as well, because it's an emergency alert. So otherwise, just a couple of quick things, I guess, as far as updates, the I did see something come out from the North Forty Mountain Alliance that I wanted to correct really quick. There is information going out saying that the Red Cross is only going to be able to shelter until Sunday, and then the people are going to be timing out, and they're going to have to find other shelter, that is incorrect. The Red Cross, we met with them last night, they have increased capacity to multiple hotel rooms throughout the county, and they are now able to manage not only additional evacuees if needed, but they're also going to be handling evacuees past the normal two-week time period, that two-week time period is more for your traditional disaster, not in a COVID environment. Because of COVID, they don't have that deadline, so they'll be able to shelter people in a non-congregate way in hotels until really people can go home, or we can get them into short-term housing if they don't have housing on their own. So hopefully that clears that up, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. Otherwise, we continue just to support the fire, we try to support the community as much as possible. Hopefully, everybody's getting really good information, the team's done a great job of having those nightly updates and giving people public information about the fire, which I think is working really well, and then they have those question-answer sessions. So if you haven't participated in those, I would really highly recommend it, you can get your questions answered directly from the team about what's going on with the fire specifically, and what their strategy and tactics are. Otherwise, the EOC continues to work on more of the recovery stuff, we are creating a recovery six different work groups that are going to work on what do we do with this fire area once the fire's out, because everybody knows that flood always follows fire. So we want to look at what's the burn severity in that area, the US Forest Service has a BEAR team, which is Burned Area Emergency Response Team. They're in the area this week, and they should be getting us some data by the end of the week, so we can start making some plans. There are a few grant programs that are out there, too, that will, might be able to allow us to do some mitigation work, so we are working with the groups. I'm on the core team with the US Forest Service, just to make sure that we're all coordinating and and we have a common common path forward, since it's going to affect really all of us that together, so our recovery is kind of ramping up as we're continuing with the response, since this is such a long fire, so hopefully that's a, in a nutshell, kind of everything that's going on, I don't know if there's any questions for me.
So Lori, just, I don't have any questions at the moment, but just for for folks' information, I put quite a bit of the information Lori talked about in the chat, so you can get it in the chat. That text word evac, information's in the chat, information about our Cameron Peak JIC is in the chat, as well as a link to NOCO Alerts and a link to the Cameron Peak Facebook page. So all that information is in the chat from folks, I am not seeing any questions, let me look. Folks, don't forget, you can put questions in the Q and A part, I don't see any hands up either, Lori, so we're good right now.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, a quick question, and maybe this is one for Reagan, what do the experts, what are their expectations about when this the Cameron Peak Fire would be more fully contained? How long are we going to be dealing with this?
Do you want me to take that one, Lori?
Yeah, that would be great.
Um, well, Commissioner, it's hard, it's hard to determine, and we definitely have made some progress in portions of the fire, folks saw containment jump up to, I believe it's twenty-seven percent now. And and as, you know, there are other parts of the fire that clearly have some solid lines built around them. It's just a matter of that team feeling very confident that new heat won't arise and cross that line. When those lines turn black, they feel very confident in calling that contained for that particular area. So we know there's some other areas that they are getting close, they have found that there's a few, for folks who saw Cory's update today, there are some spots that hadn't been showing heat that started showing heat in the last day or so, so they're going to have eyes on those. Really, for it to be, we need a season-ending snow event that covers multiple days and stays on the ground for for an extended period of time. So containment is is great, and that's what the team is definitely working for. But then for it to be out, we're we're going to need a whole lot of snow. We saw that, you know, we got snow, and that was great, and it bought us some time and and allowed firefighters to do some work, allowing us to get to the containment we're at, but we we're seeing the fire's still growing even after we had that snow on the ground. So it it really proves the point that they were trying to make, that that it wasn't going to end it, and that we are going to have to be patient with everyone, with one another, with all the different entities involved, and, you know, everyone out there is trying their hardest, we we want that fire out, I promise we do. And but there are going to be folks here working on it for the for the long duration. We're not, we're not going anywhere, we'll switch out some teams and and people, but, you know, the the managers that are here, whether it's with, you know, the sheriff and sheriff's office, or the Forest Service, the Park Service, all of those administrative people overseeing this, we're not going anywhere, and so, yeah, but it's going to take some time.
Yeah, and from kind of the beginning of this event, this fire just doesn't want to cooperate. It's just one of those fires that are very difficult, the terrain is difficult, and then also with the winds and the weather that we've had with the dry season, you know, usually we have a lot more moisture, at least a few rain events, but even in the long-term forecast, we don't see any moisture really in our area for for quite some time, so that also exacerbates the problem of being already in a drought, so it's just going to be a day-to-day thing.
And I might just throw on the other thing that, you know, Lori referenced, is we did start our Burn Area Emergency Response, so even though the fire's not out, we're still looking forward to what we need to do, and particularly in those areas where it has cooled off. Knowing that the sooner we can get started, the better on that recovery effort. So there's a separate, if folks have been using NCWeb, there's a separate NC website for that BEAR team, and that looks at really safety, emergency safety, what we need to do right away to mitigate any life safety concerns within the burn area on National Forest System lands, and then whatever data that is collected, we share out with the county and with other partners to to look at the bigger overall picture besides just the National Forest System lands, but that recovery is going to take a very long time as well. That's going to be with us for a while, with such a large landscape impacted.
And for the folks, for our participants, I did just share the link to the NC website for the BEAR NC page, so I just showed that in the chat. Well, I don't have any other questions, or I don't have any hands raised, so maybe, Commissioner, I'm going to send it back to you.
Thanks, thanks to Lori and Reagan, I think now we'll, we'll turn it over to to Daniel and Rob, and they can introduce themselves and update us on what they have to share, and of course, in the remaining time, I'm more than happy to do my best to answer other kinds of questions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for joining us, good afternoon, and thank you, Commissioner, for inviting us to continue this conversation about the Elkhorn Unit Four Prescribed Fire and the Elk Fire. My name is Daniel Baucher, I'm a forester with the Coalition for the Putter River Watershed, and I'm going to share my screen, I do have a short presentation with some slides and maps and things like that, so I'll pop that up here. All right, are we seeing the slide?
Yep, we can see it.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Okay, again, yeah, thanks for joining us, I know this is a stressful time for a lot of people out there, our hearts do go out to all the people that are evacuated at the moment, and everybody that is threatened by this fire. Again, my name is Daniel Baucher, I'm a forester with the Coalition for the Putter River Watershed, we're a local nonprofit organization. We're a local nonprofit organization focused on the health and resilience of the Puder Watershed. And I'll let Rob introduce himself.
Yeah, great, thank you, Daniel. And I, too, want to reiterate the thanks to Commissioner Kofalas for inviting us here today, as well as just the concern for the community of Red Feather, Crystal Lakes, Glacier View, everyone who is impacted by the Cameron Peak Fire. I know it's been a tough several weeks for everyone, and I hope you all are doing okay despite the difficult circumstance. So very happy to be here today to talk, as Daniel mentioned, more about the Elkhorn Unit 4 Prescribed Fire and the Elk Fire. I'm Rob Addington with the Nature Conservancy. We are a global environmental conservation organization. We focus a good bit on land protection work for both land and water protection, and as part of that, have a big emphasis on management and stewardship of our lands as well. And part of that does involve prescribed fire. We have been very active in prescribed fire really across the country for about 50 years now, with the recognition that a lot of our natural systems are adapted to fire and reintroduction of fire as an important tool for us from the standpoint of land management and reintroducing fire as a natural ecological process and conserving, you know, the natural values and biodiversity that we care about as well. So I'll be jumping back into the presentation here in just a bit. I work with our forest program here in the state of Colorado for TNC, and I'll jump back in here in just a bit to provide some more info on the prescribed fire and the Elk Fire. Daniel?
Great, thank you, Rob. So last October's prescribed fire on the Bendel Tor Scout Ranch was a part of an effort known as the Elkhorn Creek Forest Health Initiative. This initiative was formed back in 2015 by the Long speak Council Boy Scouts of America. They're the owners of the 3,200-acre Bendel Tor Scout Ranch in the upper watershed along Elkhorn Creek. The Wildlands Restoration Volunteers, the Nature Conservancy, Lemer County Conservation Corps, and my organization, Coalition for the Puder River Watershed, with the goal of mitigating wildfire risk on Elkhorn Creek, starting with the Scout Ranch. Elkhorn Creek is a major tributary of the Puder River, and reducing wildfire risk on the creek in turn protects water quality in the river, as well as reducing risk for nearby communities. The Elkhorn Creek work also takes place in the larger context of the Northern Colorado Fire Shed Collaborative. The Fire Shed, as we call it, is a group consisting of federal, state, local, and nonprofit organizations with the objective of making the northern Colorado landscape more resilient to wildfires. The Fire Shed's overarching goal is to create a ribbon of wildfire mitigation treatments. If you see the inset map there, kind of that purple ribbon, going from Wyoming border really down to southern Boulder County. This would be a combination of mechanical thinning treatments, hand-thinning, and slash pile burning, and broadcast prescribed fire, with the intent of modifying wildfire behavior to increase the chances that mountain communities would see better outcomes during wildfires, make these fires easier to fight, and to reduce the negative long-term impacts of wildfires such as hill slope erosion and water supply degradation. The Fire Shed Collaborative coordinates work on all lands, federal, state, and private, in order to multiply the impact of individual mitigation treatments. This map shows how the fuels reduction work on the Scout Ranch, the purple hatched area down in the bottom there, complements the Forest Service prescribed fires in the area to reduce wildfire risk around Red Feather Lakes and Glacier View Meadows. The federal projects you're seeing on here in black, that's the proposed Magic Feather Project. This has been delayed for a while due to the pandemic and fires in the area, but we hope to see that coming online in the near future. The other prescribed fires that are on this map that have been accomplished are the Red Feather North prescribed burns over the past few years, Pendry Hill, which was completed last year, the Elkhorn Fire prescribed fire, broadcast prescribed fire got started this year and then had to be shut down in March due to the pandemic, and then the Big Horn Sheep prescribed burns that are further up in the canyon. And so again, the work on the Scout Ranch was really meant to be a private lands complement to the work that's happening on federal lands in order to really multiply the effects of these treatments and connect them in this ribbon of mitigation for Wyoming to Boulder County. That's the idea of the Fire Shed. On the Scout Ranch itself, risk analysis shows that premitigation forest densities would lead to very high flame lengths, making wildfire hard to fight and really threatening adjacent communities, and that such an intense wildfire in this area would have quite a negative impact on drinking water supplies. To reduce these risks, since 2015, the Elkhorn Creek Forest Health Initiative has performed nearly 900 acres of mitigation work on the Scout Ranch, including an earlier broadcast prescribed fire in 2017 to the west of last year, and over 120 acres of mitigation work on nearby private lands. We continue to search out grants to continue this work on the Scout Ranch and adjacent With this context, on the overall goals of the project, I'll hand it back over to Rob. He can talk more about Elkhorn Unit 4 in particular, the Elk Fire, and the Division of Fire Prevention and Control's review of the incident.
Thanks, Daniel. So as Daniel mentioned, the Elkhorn Unit 4 Prescribed Fire, built on a lot of work that's been done over the years at the Scout Ranch, really with the intent of broadening the impact of these treatments on the larger landscape. And so the specific objectives of the prescribed fire were to reintroduce fire as a natural process in this ecological system, the Pondrosa Pine Forest. It did have a big emphasis on fuels reduction for wildfire risk mitigation, maintenance of the pine savanna by reducing conifer regeneration, promoting the understory herbaceous vegetation and shrub vegetation, and then also providing good opportunities for prescribed fire training among our larger set of partners that Daniel referenced that are a part of this Northern Colorado Fire Shed Collaborative. So the burn itself was about a year in the making in terms of the planning, and included around 50 personnel for the actual operation of the burn, spanning more than 12 agencies and organizations. So again, it was part of this larger collaborative burn effort through the Fire Shed Collaborative. On Tuesday, the 15th, we had identified the 15th and 16th of October as the operational period, and on Tuesday, the 15th, we burned 385 acres. The map here shows the actual, this is the actual operational map, and shows the actual units and the way in which they were divided up, with the 385 acres on Tuesday being that larger portion in the northern part of the map. And then the goal was to complete the unit. The unit in total was 505 acres, so complete the additional 120 acres on that Wednesday, October the 16th, and that unit is in the lower portion here on the southern part of the map here. So right around 3:00 PM on that Wednesday is when we had the escape occur, and it occurred on the eastern boundary of that lower unit. And at that point, the operations really switched from prescribed fire implementation to containment. It was declared a wildfire by the burn boss quickly, and fortunately, among the partners that were on the burn was the Lemer County Sheriff's Office, and so we quickly turned the fire as it was declared a wildfire over to the sheriff's office to manage the containment of the fire. Unfortunately, associated with that were evacuations that were issued for the community of Glacier View. Fortunately, by that Friday, the fire was 100% contained. And so, let's see, Daniel, next slide. So, you know, as we go into these projects, the intent around them, really around wildfire risk reduction, fuels reduction, community protection, water resource protection, in this case, as Daniel mentioned, you know, we go into these projects with good intent, and this, obviously, to have an escape is the last thing that we want to have happen. And so I do want to say that we're just sincerely sorry about this as an outcome, and we are committed to continuing to work through the review process, which I'll touch on more here in a minute to, you know, understand how we can learn and grow from this incident. But we are just really sorry for the impact that we created and the impact to Glacier View in particular through the evacuations that were ordered. So following the escape, as Daniel mentioned, the Division of Fire Prevention and Control conducted a review that occurred over the course of about five months, culminating in the release of this report that's shown here in mid-March, March the 12th. The report is very much in, very in-depth, and very much looks at a range of factors that led to the escape, concluding really that there wasn't any single factor, it was a combination of factors coming together. The alignment of topography in this particular part of the burn unit with fuels and with high winds that afternoon of that Wednesday, the 16th of October. The report issues or kind of puts together a set of recommendations and does some evaluation of other escape prescribed fires as well, and packages all this information into kind of a set of both recommendations and lessons relearned, which is very useful for us moving forward. So I don't have time to get into a whole lot of detail of the report itself, but I will encourage the attendees to look at the link here below and follow that, even if you just do a Google search for DFPC, Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and Elkhorn Fire, or Elk Fire, it should come up for you. So please take a look at the more detailed report if you're interested in learning more about the factors that led to the escape.
Hey, Rob, would it be, would you be able to copy that link and just throw it in the text to all attendees? I can't do that, and that might be helpful for them.
Yeah, Daniel, if you're able to do that, and, so, yeah, that'd be great.
Yep, I can do that.
Great, thanks, Daniel. And then when you have a chance, you can advance to the next slide as well.
Michelle, I'll copy that link in just a minute. We'll get through the presentation, and I can put it in the chat.
No problem.
Great, thank you. So as I mentioned, the review itself was completed in mid-March, and since that time, the Nature Conservancy and its partners have been going through the review itself and the recommendations that came out of it, and really trying to, you know, internalize, think about how we can use the recommendations moving forward. And we've kind of bucketed around these three categories, the larger set of recommendations that involves burn planning, collaborative burning, and communications and community outreach. And I want to touch for just a minute on each of these. As it relates to burn planning, work that we're doing to refine fire weather assessments and the way in which fire weather is brought into the burn planning process to develop what's called the prescription or the parameters around which a burn can be safely implemented. And this also has to do with fire behavior modeling and the way in which tools are used for understanding what a fire may do under a certain set of conditions. So refinement kind of in both of those areas around how the weather information data is used and how the fire behavior modeling is conducted as well. Also, a look at the implementation windows, and often burn plans are written to have a fairly broad implementation window so that we have, you know, flexibility in actually implementing burns and reevaluating that to an extent to look at, you know, narrower windows and really trying to target the conditions under which burns can be more safely implemented. And then contingency planning, just in the event of an escape. What would we expect the fire behavior to be, you know, outside of the unit itself in an area that it may be burning into if it gets out of the unit? So those are a few of the main points around burn planning. The collaborative burn model, as we call it, that was touched on a good bit in the results, the report itself as well, as it relates to this larger Northern Colorado Fire Shed initiative. And just thinking about how we can improve that burn model, it's important that these types of burns involve a whole host of agencies and organizations, often no single agency or organization can, you know, pull off a burn like this. And so by coming together, working collaboratively, it helps us leverage each other's resources, expertise, and capacity. But definitely some areas that we need to continue working on with this collaborative burning approach, especially as it relates to landscape planning, training and capacity building, and then how we actually structure the organization itself for a given burn, and how we think about the leadership positions relative to trainee positions, and just generally what that organizational structure looks like within a given burn. And then certainly saw a lot of opportunity for improvement around communications and community outreach, both as it relates to input during a burn planning process, but also during the actual operation of a burn, how we, you know, get the word out about upcoming burns, more so how we engage the community and make sure basically that folks know, you know, what's going on in the larger landscape. And again, some opportunities that CPRW, the Coalition for the Puder River Watershed, who Daniel is with, has definitely been working to improve as well. So, next slide, Daniel. So I'll say, you know, all of those recommendations are kind of in the context of this larger collaborative group. And I did want to touch on just some changes internally within the Nature Conservancy, within our Colorado program, that we have experienced in the last several months, really due to the economic downturn with COVID-19. Like a lot of other nonprofits, we've certainly been impacted by the downturn, and it has resulted in discontinuation of several of our conservation programs, one of which was our fire program. And we have been working with our close partner, the Forest Stewards Guild, to transition our program more so to the Forest Stewards Guild, where the Nature Conservancy will still be very much involved in kind of the planning efforts around prescribed fire, but the actual operational piece for future fire would be more under the umbrella of the Forest Stewards Guild and this larger, again, the Fire Shed Collaborative Group. All that said, the Nature Conservancy very much still supports and sees, you know, a need for prescribed fire in collaboration with others. But, you know, through this experience, definitely need to continue thinking about how we most safely and effectively implement the fire on the ground itself, and continue as a larger collaborative to, you know, grow and improve and learn how to use this tool, again, in a safe and effective manner. So with that, I will stop my portion, Daniel. And, yeah, it looks like it.
Great, thank you very much, Rob. And at this point, Michelle, do you have questions?
Yeah, we have, we do have a couple of questions, and you, Rob, you might need to reshare your screen. We have a question about the unit map. So I don't know, oh, I'm sorry, Daniel, if you can go back to that unit map. There's really no landmarks on that unit map, and our participants were having a little bit of struggle in placing things. So if you could review that, that would be great.
Certainly. Let me get that back up on the screen. There we go. Can we see it?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, and Daniel, maybe hop to the slide just before this one, because I think it does a better job of, you know, putting this unit in the context of, yeah, there you go.
There, so good.
Larger ranch.
Right.
And maybe with your mouse, I can see your pointer, if you're able to, yeah, kind of draw a little circle.
Right.
Unit.
So right here, you've got County Road 74E, that's Red Feather Lakes Road up here. Kind of underneath the legend, but out this way is County Road 68C, that's the Boy Scout Road, and then running through the treatments there is Elkhorn Creek itself. So Glacier View would just be off to the east, just a couple of private properties over.
Thank you, guys. I think that's probably helpful for everybody.
Yeah, and then just quickly, the unit itself is that larger, yeah, red hashed polygon there. Daniel mentioned the red hashes just to the west are units that were implemented with prescribed fire in 2017, so a couple of years ago. units that were implemented with prescribed fire in 2017, so a couple of years ago now. And then the area of the larger polygon that you can see extends actually off of the Scout Ranch boundary. That's where the wildfire, so that represents the extent of the wildfire off of the ranch.
That's right.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, guys. Another question for you too. What specific improvements or corrections in community communication have you actually implemented already?
Great. Yeah, I'll go ahead and take that one. Well, the first thing we've done is to do a really thorough review within the fire shed. So the fire shed again is this larger group of all the organizations, federal, state, local, that are involved in this wildfire mitigation work. And after the incident, we had an after-action review, internal one, and went through all of the processes as far as communication and outreach goes. And so we got a really good idea of what we accomplished and what we didn't accomplish before this prescribed fire and before the escape. And from that and during the subsequent community meetings, so you guys remember the community meetings that happened in December and then again in March, when the DFPC released their review report. We did some post-meeting surveys there. We got a lot of good responses from people in the community about, you know, how would you like to be contacted? And that is part of the challenge. And as, as a lot of you mountain residents know, getting good communications during an event is a challenge anyway, and especially during an emergency like the tape that happened in October or the Cameron Peak Fire right now. And so we got a better idea of how to get in touch with people. A lot of that was, you know, all methods are, are better than a few. And so we've really identified, you know, working with the North Forty Mountain Alliance, posting things in the North Forty News, getting in touch with local, we could call them neighborhood captains or something like that, just those folks that are really kind of the point people for their neighborhoods and develop some relationships with them and have talked with Glacier View Fire and some of those folks just about how before any work like this is done in the future, what are the best ways to move forward with that communication and outreach ahead of time? And so, you know, we haven't implemented any of these changes yet because there are no immediate plans for broadcast burning on private lands in the vicinity. But we, I think we have a pretty good idea of those changes going forward. And I will mention that there are some slash piles on the landscape, both on the Scout Ranch, up on North Rim Road, and a few other places now on some of those adjoining private properties. And those will be ready to burn probably this winter for some of them and the next, and the next winter for several more of those. And so we will be trying out those communication methods before those piles are burned. We will get the message out in as many ways as possible and make sure that message got out. And we would also like to get some landowners and community members out there just to see the process, to see what those piles look like beforehand, to talk about permitting process, to talk about the smoke impacts. And it would be great to, you know, have people involved from the front end. So we're not, so we're not cleaning this stuff up on the backend. Those are, I hope that's specific enough, but that's some of the ways that we're going about those changes.
Yeah, and just I'll add just one other quick thing ahead of this burn. The outreach that we did do, one was to, around mailers and sending out mailers to residents in the general vicinity. But what we found was that the mailers probably looked like junk mail to some folks and just didn't really have the, didn't really hit the target, I guess, didn't have the, the impact and get the word out like we wanted it to. And so we recognize we need to implement, employ some different methods for outreach beyond mailers. One thing we also did that Daniel was very instrumental in was set up a field day a couple of months. I think it was two months in advance of the fire itself, to actually visit the site and take a tour of the unit, talk through the plan for the burn and just doing more outreach around those kind of events to actually get people out on the ground, I think, is an important thing. And then with, with Reagan being on the line here, we've talked about better coordinating and kind of tying in with the communications and outreach that the Forest Service has set up and being, you know, a good channel for any work that's done on private lands to also sort of go through and get the word out because they've, for Forest Service-related burns, definitely I think done a good job with that outreach piece and keeping the community up to date through, you know, things like Facebook and other avenues. So I think definitely some additional mechanisms or ways of kind of plugging into some existing outreach methods that way.
Daniel and Rob, related to this matter of outreach, is there a convenient way for folks to provide input about ideas for that that maybe you may not think of?
No, I would say the, the tours and things like that that Rob mentioned, we did want to get people out on the burn unit this spring and fall, but that hasn't been possible with COVID and that kind of thing. But those types of events are really good conversation starters and people can really give their input while we're out on the ground and seeing what the unit looks like and that kind of thing. And then beyond that, I would just say in general, you know, you can reach out to myself, you can reach out to Rob, you can reach out to Reagan. Sooner than later, the Northern Colorado Fire Shed Collaborative will have a website and social media channels and those are coming soon. And that will be a way that you'll be able to communicate with that larger group, which is nice. But for right now, you know, I'm happy to, daniel@puterwatershed.org or you can look us up on the web, please get ahold of me and, and we can send your comments and questions to the right people. And that may be talking with the local fire district, that may be talking with Forest Service. And we're really trying to do this as a, as a coordinated planning effort now. I think there are a lot of ways forward for that.
Thank you for that response, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, I have another question and this one might actually be for Reagan. So can someone explain how the prescribed burns that have already happened will affect slash help with the Cameron Peak Fire? I don't know if there is a map showing the old fires, including prescribed burns and ones not prescribed.
I don't know that there, this is a great question, Darlene. I don't know if there is a map showing all of those that is out there publicly. We definitely have it and I can promise you that the incident management team has it and are looking at that as they're making their plans. So what I can tell you is not just prescribed burn, but also mechanical treatments that every team we've had has looked at those. Some of those north lines that they have utilized, they have actually opened up old logging roads and connected areas where treatments have been done. At the, when it crossed Pingery Park Road, it spotted a lot. And in places where it hit the old Dad Bennett burn, which I think wasn't completed until like 2003, it, it's taken some time. But where it hit that old prescribed burn and where it hit the High Park burn scar, it dramatically moderated fire behavior. And that, those were the places that it did not continue to spread and firefighters had kind of that fighting chance, even given the conditions that we were facing. But, but then you saw in the places where we had not had those along the Pingery Park Road is where there were those contiguous fuels and that continued to burn. Related to where the fire is now, we do have the Pingery Hill prescribed burn that was done. We have started Elk Horn, but not very much of Elk Horn has been able to be accomplished. We just didn't have the windows. And then again, with COVID, really minimizing some opportunities just because putting more smoke in the air was not necessarily a good idea with a respiratory illness impacting so many. And the, the magic feather burn, again, hasn't been implemented. That would have been our, our next plan and still will be. We hope we still get to do it. And that is just, you know, to the east of where the fire is currently burning, east of that Manhattan Road and even going up to Dowdy. It's a pretty large area. The Red Feather burn that was done north of Red Feather and just east of Crystal Lakes, let's all hope we don't have to see what, what it can do. But, but what we do know is in those places that we have burned, it really does moderate behavior and gives those firefighters a better chance to get a handle on it. It'll still burn, there's still fuels there, grasses come back. We don't want to burn out all of the trees. So there's, there's still, you know, fire can still carry, but it doesn't carry, carry nearly as much as in places where no treatment has been done. And I will say for that area just east of the Manhattan, we've also done a fair amount of mechanical burn, but my cat, sorry, mechanical treatment prior to any burning taking place. So, you know, that, that's another opportunity that, that firefighters will have if, heaven forbid, that, that is what happens with the fire. So all of these treatments are good. They are even better when they are done at a landscape scale, tying back into what Daniel and Rob have been saying. That's really why we're working with partners across that landscape is because we know that we need it, we need, we need large areas for it to be the most effective.
Hey Reagan, can you explain what a mechanical treatment is?
Yes, so mechanical treatment can be a few different things. Sorry, I get, I get in my Forest Service way of talking. So it can be hand crews out there with chainsaws. It can also be heavy machinery. We've talked a lot during the fire about feller bunchers where they go and they cut the trees and they pick them up and they move them. It can also just be hot saws, you know, machinery out there that cuts the trees and then other machinery that comes and takes it all to a landing area before it's removed. So it can be a lot of different types of treatments.
Reagan, I have a question. My understanding with that, with the Cameron Peak Fire, which originated, I believe, in the Raywall Wilderness Area, 80% of the fuel was beetle kill trees. Could you speak to that a little bit? And also, what is one outcome of this fire in terms of, you know, burning some of that beetle kill, which is, you know, which is really hard to remove mechanically and, and, and it's a lot harder, I think, to do prescribed burns. I don't know if we can do prescribed burns on, on wilderness lands.
You can burn in wilderness. Part of that Dad Bennett, actually, part of what helped stop High Park was some of the pre-work done for our casual Pooter prescribed burn that had not been implemented, but that pre-work done along the lines for it. I mean, that was going to be burning mostly the wilderness. That's the one good treatment option we have in wilderness is prescribed burn. However, the Raywall Wilderness is not necessarily that location. Depending, it's so steep and there is so much, as you mentioned, beetle kill in there that it makes for, for a unique challenge that we don't necessarily have in other places. But the other thing with wilderness is that there also aren't roads there. So it's much harder to stop a fire because there aren't any of those man-made features, which is great because we need areas like that that are untrampled, but, but also much more of a challenge for, for stopping a fire. And what we, you know, the, the type of fire that we had, it was fuels-driven as all of the ops people keep saying. And then with those winds that we had, everything has been so dry and those, those beetle kill trees are, are dead and they are dry. But also the live ones are dry. And so, you know, we really, just everything out there was so dry. So it definitely impacted it. One of the largest ways, though, that it impacted it is because of that safety hazard to firefighters. The, the falling tree hazard, it was so high in so many parts of this fire. It's going to continue to be for the public as well. And so people are probably going to see closures in numerous areas just because of that falling tree area until some of that can be mitigated. But that, that is really one of the biggest challenges is not wanting a tree to fall on a firefighter and, and risk anything happening to them.
Does this Cameron Peak Fire burning all of that beetle kill, does it have the potential of improving forest health in the future?
It may and it may not. I think our burn area emergency response will help tell us that. In some places, if it was, if there was a lot of dead and down on the ground, it might have done damage to the soil if it burned for too long, sorry, my dog, burned too long or too hot. So, so you might see impacts to the soil. Whereas in other places, if it moved through really quickly and it didn't have that, that negative impact on the fuels, it is going to be a way to kind of help, you know, rebirth that, that, those areas of the forest.
Thank you, Reagan.
Thanks, Reagan. That was a lot of really interesting information. Question back for Daniel and Rob. Is there a contact or email for people to ask to be put on some type of like email server? So can someone be put on some type of email list to get events and fire info from the Pooter Coalition? Or who else is part of that group? So is there an email list for folks to get on?
There is, and you posted my email address in the chat just a minute ago. That's a great way to do it. I've got a pretty extensive community contact list going and those are folks that I've met through outreach events and activities. Like I went out and did a bunch of site visits last summer on people who were interested in mitigation. And then a lot of the folks that showed up to the DFPC review meeting and that kind of thing. So I've got a pretty good community contact list going and I would love to make it bigger. So please email me, daniel@puterwatershed.org and I will make sure you're notified for any of these types of events.
Thank you, Daniel. Michelle, I don't have any other questions right now. I don't see any hands raised. So this might be a good time for you to cover anything else you wanted to cover. And then if people have other questions that come up, they have a little time to get them in the Q and A box.
Well, Michelle, one thing I wanted to inform people about, which I would turn it back over to you, and that is, will we be, I mean, there's a lot of good information here and hopefully the slide presentation will be made available somehow. But I know typically, you know, we record these things and then we post them on our YouTube channel. Could you speak to that as a way of getting the word out further to folks who may not have been able to participate today?
So we do always put these videos out onto Lammert County's YouTube channel. It usually takes me about a day or so. And if I don't have to do any editing, occasionally I'll have a guest that gives out some, some wrong information and they'll ask me to get in there and, and, you know, put in some blurbs that give out right information. I don't think that's going to happen today. So it usually takes me about 24 hours or so. Zoom has to process the video and then I go ahead and put it up on our YouTube channel. So once, once Zoom is done processing, we'll get it up on the Lammert County YouTube channel. Just go to YouTube and search for Lammert County, you'll find us and we'll be able to, you'll be able to check it out that way.
Thank you, Michelle. And I see that Lori has made herself visible in response to the most recent question that has been posted. Thank you, Lori.
So Lori, let me read out the question for everybody and then you can answer. Will the Cameron Peak Fire be declared the kind of emergency that will unlock federal or state financial support?
Okay, so this is a complicated question, so I'm gonna, I'll, I'll talk about kind of how this works. So think about a disaster declaration as a pie and that pie has many pieces to it that we might be able to, to partake. Okay, so right now, the fire, we do have state-level support for the fire through the Emergency Fire Fund. And that fire fund allows for some additional reimbursements on the non-Forest Service property for, for suppression efforts. So the aircraft that you're seeing, the structure engines that you guys have seen in the Red Feather area and Crystal Lakes lately, that is, the state supports us in that effort. The county pays into that fund every year in order for us to then take out of that fund. So that is one piece that we have in place right now. We also do have a FEMA declaration, but it's a, it's an FMAG declaration, which stands for Fire Management Assistance Grant. And what that is for is again, that's for suppression of the fire. So the FMAG declaration pays in the US Forest Service anywhere on the fire for those suppression efforts, 75% of those costs. So again, we do have that in place right now. In order to get the other FEMA programs, like I mentioned, the pie, there's the Individual Assistance Program. I really hope that we don't qualify for the Individual Assistance Program because in order to qualify for that, we would have to lose 200, 250 homes that are uninsured or underinsured. We don't want that. And then that program really just helps individuals at that individual level. But the most that FEMA can pay an individual is about $30,000. So really the best thing for everybody is to just be well-insured or to be insured in your area for your structures. The other piece is the Public Assistance Piece, which this is still a possibility to have happen with this fire or with the, with flooding that could occur in the spring or next year. Public assistance is if we have about $7 million in public infrastructure that's damaged or destroyed, we would qualify at both the state and local level to apply for the FEMA Public Assistance Program. So again, it's not just one declaration. We have declared at the county, the state has declared as well. But we have to meet thresholds for different pieces of the pie in order to get different types of assistance in. So right now, the only assistance we have federally is that right now, the only assistance we have federally is that, the FMAG declaration, the Fire Management Assistance Grant. However, when we are looking at treatments like Reagan talked about for life safety, to try to do stuff right away, so that if we do have a rain event, we can decrease the risk to folks, that comes through in the EWP program, Emergency Watershed Protection Program, and some other programs through mitigation. But Emergency Water Protection is really the, where the bear assessment comes in. We see what that burn severity is, and then everybody gets together and the, the EWP program determines what's the best treatment, or what's the best mitigation effort that can be done right now to try to decrease any kind of loss of life or loss of property. So that's what's going to be happening in the next few months. Next year is really where the bigger programs through FEMA will come in for mitigation work in that bigger fire area, as well as some mitigation work for flooding or sediment flows, that sort of thing. So hopefully that answers your question. It isn't as easy as just yes or no.
Lori, I'm glad you answered the question, because I, when I read the question, I thought there was an easy answer. So I'm very glad you're still here. But I, I wonder if you would, if you would comment on the extension, the, the local disaster emergency declaration and the fire ban extension that the commissioners did, I think it was last week. Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes. When this fire first happened, you know, our longest fire from beginning to containment was High Park, and that was about 20 days. So we thought that 30 days, we'd be pretty comfortable with a disaster declaration at the beginning of this. So the board originally signed a disaster declaration for 30 days. I did go before the board on Tuesday. I don't know if it was this week or last week. Time flies when you're having fun. And they did extend that declaration to October the 31st, just to give us as much time as possible. We could always extend it past that if we need to, but that allows us to continue utilizing our local emergency plans. We have some disaster waivers that are in place for policy that allow us to pay differently and procure differently. So that's all in place. And then the state has also extended their executive order for the Cameron Peak Fire to continue providing assistance with the National Guard, who's helping with the traffic patrol points, some of the aircraft that's coming from the state. So all of that is also in place. So that'll be in place for a little while longer, and will be extended as needed. And then the fire ban, the fire ban was in place. It was also set to expire on September the 18th. So at the same meeting, I had asked the board if they would extend that, and they've extended it also to October 31st. Now, they could always come back and say, our fire danger isn't as bad anymore, and lift it. But at least at this point, with how dry we think that this fall is going to be, that fire ban will be in place until October 31st.
Thank you.
Mr. I have no other questions, and it looks like you're muted still. So.
Yes, it does. So I think that we'll wrap this up. And one thing I'd like for folks to think about is, well, first of all, to join me in thanking Reagan and Lori and Rob and Daniel, and certainly Angela Myers. Appreciate you folks taking the time and helping to inform us. I believe our next scheduled community conversation, I think, is October 22nd. And at this point, I imagine we'll continue in this virtual format. But I would ask that if you have specific topics or issues that you'd like addressed, people we should be inviting for that meeting, that you would either email or call me, or perhaps do the same with Michelle, so we can be responding to what is most important to you folks. And hopefully by October 22nd, things will be, there'll be more certainty about where, how we're moving forward with the fire and, and so many other things that we're faced with. And, oh, and just to echo, you know, the ballots, the election, they will drop with the post office, I think, on Friday, October 9th. They'll start getting mailed out. We should start getting them the week of the 12th. And as Angela said, please, you know, please make informed decisions, of course, and try to get those ballots filled out and turned in sooner than later, which really helps them a lot, because they're also having to adapt to the COVID-19 pandemic. And, and so they have to deal with physical distancing and where they process the, you know, the ballots, and they check for signatures and everything else. So please keep that in mind as you're participating in our representative democracy. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Daniel and, and Rob. And I have my nature conservancy fundraising envelope here. I think it's, I'm overdue. I'll see if I can try to help you guys pay the bills or something.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the invitation today, and, and thanks for helping us continue this conversation. Thanks.
So all, we'll, we'll close. And Michelle, as always, thank you. And, and folks, please take good care.
Thanks, Michelle.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.